Hi Bob. Bob here. Hi Bob, you listen to 0630 when you get free next. Are you okay?
Okay.
Paul leading order. My pledge of allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America, to your honor, to your stands, on a nation, in its resolve, and in its justice for all.
Okay. Now you might notice that we only have two board members here tonight and three are required to reform. We have Bob Corpa on his cell phone right here, he's out of the area, but we can hear us and we can hear him, so this is, um, this is a little bit. Uh, first item is changes or additions to the agenda, and I have one. I would like to add an agenda item to amend Board Policy 1400 to read that a majority of board members will be considered as a form. Okay? So that's, so I, I move that.
And I say.
It's been moved and seconded to add an agenda item to amend Policy 1400 to read a majority of board members will be considered as a form. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we have three to throw.
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
We have some of our, at least one of our track people here, and I would, we do move their recognition up.
Where would you like to move that?
Well, well, can we keep it flexible?
In here?
Yeah. In case another year they're gonna come. The audience is gonna hold on, you're fine. You're just signing.
I, I move that we, uh, change the agenda item to recognize the state track team. Move that, we move that up as soon as the entire track team arrives.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to move the agenda item regarding the state track team recognition, uh, up to when the team arrives. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right. Now we'll deal with the added item to amend Board Policy 1400. I move that we amend Board Policy 1400 to read a majority of the board members will be considered as constituting a form for a transaction of business.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to amend Board Policy 1400 to read a majority of the board members will be considered as constituting a form for a transaction of business. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Our consent agenda.
I move the board approve their consent agenda as modified.
Aye.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as modified. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? No opposition, motion carries. Item five personnel, a college resignation of Steve Dackey as board member. I move Board of Dolly as a resignation of Steve Dackey board member. I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to a college resignation of Steve Dackey board member. Any discussion?
I'll just thank you for the service on board, appreciate it.
Okay? Any other?
This is very, 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 very,
all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Uh, item five B, acknowledge resignation of Josh Holt, board member. I move Board of Dolly as a resignation of Josh Holt, board member. I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to acknowledge the resignation of Josh Holt, board member. Any discussion? I would like to thank Josh as well for his time on the board.
Thank you, sorry that I told you the answer to your last part.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Item five C, acknowledge resignation of Charlotte Pelkey, teacher.
I move Board of Dolly as a resignation of Charlotte Pelkey, teacher.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to acknowledge the resignation of Charlotte Pelkey, teacher. Any discussion?
I heard it's in Vegas.
It's in Vegas.
It's in Vegas.
Three thousand, yeah.
Yeah, first of all, large, large, big school.
Another problem, right?
Yeah. He likes his son, I know that.
All right. All in.
All in, everybody, please, I've got a question, well.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item five D, acknowledge resignation of Laurie Dearmore, teacher.
I move the Board of Dolly as the resignation of Laurie Dearmore, teacher.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to acknowledge the resignation of Laurie Dearmore, teacher. Any discussion?
And she's gone south end instead of the, and old man, my, right?
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five E, acknowledge resignation of Larry Britton, groundskeeper, as of eight thirty-one fifteen.
I move the Board of Dolly as the resignation of Larry Britton, groundskeeper, August thirty-first, two thousand fifteen.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to acknowledge the resignation of Larry Britton, groundskeeper, as of eight thirty-one fifteen. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item five F, acknowledge resignation of Russ Higman, athletic director.
I move Board of Dolly as the resignation of Russ Higman, athletic director.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to acknowledge the resignation of Russ Higman, athletic director. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item five G, acknowledge resignation of Rose Nisbet, middle school girls' basketball coach.
I move Board of Dolly as the resignation of Rose Nisbet, middle school girls' basketball coach.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to acknowledge the resignation of Rose Nisbet, middle school girls' basketball coach. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item five H, acknowledge resignation of Heidi Anderson, middle school girls' basketball coach.
I move Board of Dolly as the resignation of Heidi Anderson, middle school girls' basketball coach.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to acknowledge the resignation of Heidi Anderson, middle school girls' basketball coach. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item five I, acknowledge resignation of Merlin Serpent, parent educator.
I move the Board of Dolly as the resignation of Merlin Serpent, parent educator.
It's been moved and seconded to acknowledge the resignation of Merlin Serpent, parent educator. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item five J, acknowledge the resignation of Debbie Danny, middle school volleyball coach.
Oh, that's one, there.
I don't know.
Brian Macy.
Okay, I've got, I did, it's, oh. Okay.
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 She banged his eye.
She did it, didn't she?
I think it's off, up here.
Okay, I don't see, I don't see, I don't see Debbie Danny on this picture. Yeah. Okay. All right. So again, item five J, acknowledge the resignation of Debbie Danny, middle school volleyball coach.
I move the Board of Dolly as the resignation of Debbie Danny, volleyball coach.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to acknowledge the resignation of Debbie Danny, middle school volleyball coach. Any discussion?
I just appreciate your, since those two are dead.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay. Item five K, approve the hire of Brian Macy, athletic director.
I move the Board approve the hire of Brian Macy, athletic director.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the hire of Brian Macy, athletic director. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item five L, approve the hire of Meg Colhoun, third grade teacher.
I move the Board approve the hire of Meg Colhoun, third grade teacher.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the hire of Meg Colhoun, third grade teacher. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item five M, approve hire of Sue Holt, elementary slash P E teacher.
I move the Board approve the hire of Sue Holt, elementary P E teacher.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the hire of Sue Holt, elementary slash P E teacher. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item five N, approve the hire of Rose Nisbet, head girls' basketball coach.
I move the Board approve the hire of Rose Nisbet, girls varsity basketball coach.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the hire of Rose Nisbet, head girls' basketball coach. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item five O, approve hire of Merlin Serpent, youth camp school secretary.
I move the Board approve the hire of Merlin Serpent, youth camp school secretary.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the hire of Merlin Serpent, youth camp school secretary. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay. At this time, we will, um, acknowledge the state track participants.
I always say, one out of five being bad is great. Well, first of all, thank you for coming. And this is Connor here with the Diet Club. We want to give special recognition to him, sixth place in the triple jump, right? We go to last year, he's been competitive in track for several years, he closed all of our, um, sports actually, but we just wanted to take a moment to recognize our athletes. I know some of them couldn't make it tonight, they had other, um, medical procedures or appointments, but our girls were third in district in softball, they made it to state, but actually lost out their two first games, but competed well. Our, our girls were district champs, and then, of course, our, our state medalists, we have Savannah Amannen, um, she was eighth place, I don't know if she's, uh, eighth place in pole vaults, and Tyler, she's a senior, Tyler also a senior, he was second place in pole vaults. Connor, senior sixth place in triple jump. Matt Carter was third place in high jump. And then we have Elliot, it's hard to see with their white shirt on there, but she brought home three medals. She had the third place in the high jump, the fifth in the one hundred girls, and sixth in the three hundred girls, so we just want to acknowledge our students and thank them for a terrific season, so I'll just, I'm first. And if you guys do. Welcome to state, or, 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 but if you do state, it might be a piece of cake or a cookie or whatever. And if the pace were on, it shouldn't be long, so, congratulations to a great student. Good season for all our sports, so we're very happy.
Hey, I've been making decisions.
Okay. These policies, um, first read, so give them an explanation. I see a print on my mom. I'm gonna reset up the mom, I feel like I need another. Oh. Because the reflection was just very, yes. What's that? We get a different picture. Yeah. Because the reflection of the screen is on their body. On their body? Not here. It's not that, it's on their, their, their.
The words.
You can, you can stand. You wanna shake his hand? Not in front of the screen. Oh, you can hug, yeah, let up, yeah. Like a heavenly angel? Yeah. We're holding hands once you walk in. Water? Yeah. Okay. He's a good sport. Uh, no, I agree with him. Okay. All right. Anyways, just overview, but this is, uh, Bob's, um, latest rendition, they have had some changes in, um, basically more leniency for high school students. Um, they do allow a waiver up to two credits of the total required for graduation, and it's based on, you know, circumstances typically outside of students who follow applications of homelessness or health condition, um, that could be physical health, mental health, various disabilities. So, they are recognizing more and more that not everyone fits in the same, same box, and there are a lot of challenges in, in growing up, in families moving, so, um, they will allow up to two credits, like I said, and it isn't a likely credit. So, this would be just a, a first read, but it's obviously going to be strongly encouraged that we adopt it because it's, um, back to legislation, so, I'm not, not that option. Um, the second one, I wanted to talk about, this, um, had a situation this year regarding the grade, and in looking through it, we really didn't have, have a policy. Uh, a lot of schools do have a policy on this, so it might be in order to bring something to the board to consider, um, and the crux of the policy is a couple pages long, but we do realize that there may be situations where there's an error in the recording of the grade or the calculation of math that derive the grade, and we have had students who do want to retake a course to improve their GPA, and we really didn't have anything in writing about how to address that, so, this policy would address that, and we'd have to make copies, and if anyone does want to copy, let me know. So what this does is set some timelines for bringing up a concern about a grade, it's not just left open, and it establishes a thirty days after the term. Um, if there is a grade change, you obviously need to complete a paperwork, there's a form for that, and the other situation, and this one speaks to more what we experienced recently, is students sometimes want to retake the course, they're not satisfied with the grade that they have on their transcript. So, we do allow retakes, and there is actually some RCWs behind this, you can retake a class. Each time you retake a class, it is listed on the transcript, so let's say you took, and it doesn't apply to recurring classes like band, kids stay banned, you know, every year. So, this would apply to maybe your freshman English class, your sophomore English class, or your math class. So, you could retake English nine, let's say, three or four times if you wanted to. The highest grade would be figured into GPA, but if classes remain on your transcript, so it would say English one, English one, English one, one of them will have the credit attached to it, the highest one, the rest would say no grade. And we have had this occur, so we needed to come up with some, some language to support for that. Students sometimes appeal grades for athletic eligibility, things like that, so the grade would stay in place until the appeals complete, but this outlines the process of how that would work. Something we'll be considering for drafting next month. The third policy, uh, for, um, first read, is actually one that was amended earlier, but it's really isn't about that part, this is about something else, so this policy will look different, it'd be adopted in a couple different ways, but I believe it was last meeting, it could have been the meeting before, I talked about, um, the possibility of holding some of our board meetings in Lakewood County, and the months that I would like to propose, and I say months, so that'd be, to me, starting with a fifteen, sixteen school year, it does say August, November, and March, but if we did adopt that, it would start in November, March, and then August, not this coming August, um, but again, that's something to consider, I think it would be good to have some of our meetings on the, if you ever in the district it would be more inclusive. Nothing else was changed in this policy, except now we'll be adding a motion that, that was mentioned earlier, partly governed by this policy, so the rest of it's the same as we had before, it's this whole part, highlighting that, it would be different. Again, these are all just first read.
Okay.
Back to you, Google, so yes.
Do Bob have a question?
You have a question, Bob?
No, I'm, 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 I'm,
We have a lot of your ideas, buddy, on garage doors, and that's the one we're going to go with. And I think it's going to be, for security purposes and better than the school district, I think it's going to be a very wide stretch to proceed on this.
Yes?
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
I just want to thank Carl for his efforts on that. It has been about a year. We'll be processing.
Item PF, approved contract with ESD 112 for business manager and payroll services.
I move the board to approve the contract with ESD 112 for business manager and payroll services.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the contract with ESD 112 for business manager and payroll services. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. A G, approved contract with ESD 113 for driver's education program.
I move the board to approve the contract with ESD 113 for driver's education program.
Aye.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the contract with ESD 113 for driver's education program. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. A H, approved purchase of sixty home books with rural grant funds not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
I move the board to approve the purchase of sixty home books with rural grant funds not to exceed thirty thousand.
It's been moved and seconded to approve purchase of sixty home books with rural grant funds not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Principal and staff.
All right. Well, back in March, we had the history, the high school proficiency exam, new minister to the youth there. Basically, it's the kids who haven't passed it before, or who haven't taken it before. And so a lot of them had taken it, but the ones who haven't, we administered the test to them. Pretty amazing, particularly since a lot of them haven't been at school much, and when they have, haven't been very successful in school. Had a lot of classes they hadn't passed. Anyway, out of the thirty tests that we administered to the youth there for reading and writing, twenty-seven of them passed. But once we've got results back, there's a couple of kids that we still in the system, they're not there for some reason. But that's incredible, getting ninety percent passing rate. Pretty damn high. For reading, it was ninety-three point ninety-three and a third percent. For writing, it was eighty-six and two-thirds, but that's extremely high for, considering our population. We just had the science and math and the course assessments. And I can tell you right now, they're not going to be that high, because you know, you can give a kid who's been living on the streets, or homeless, or you know, doing the gang life.
Okay.
Oh, well. Well, in that show, Bob, the kids at the camp that took the high school proficiency exam got ninety percent of them passed for the writing and the reading. So that's kind of it. As far as the math and the science, you know, it takes a long time to get a kid the proficiency that they're going to pass in any course, algebra, my logic test. And so, you know, we don't have most of ninety percent of those kids passing, but they still have good instruction, it's just they haven't been there long enough to be at that level. But we test them anyway if they're eligible, and so that's pretty amazing for our staff and the kids for the work card up there to get ninety percent of them passing. So anyway, that's kind of it. The camp, or start, the second day of summer school today, and you know, the kids, as they left on Friday, I told them, "Have a great summer, I'll see you Monday." They'll need to turn around and, you know, they're in school all summer, but so that's good. We're running six periods of school, so all the kids only have three classes right now because budget-wise, we've got to cut the number of kids we have, if you recall, so the only way we can make up the difference and come out in the black is they have a real small summer school, so that's what we're doing. But we have three classes for every kid, and we offer a summer reading program where they can pick up an extra quarter of a credit that's an elective in the summer reading program. So that's kind of a neat deal. And we're able to offer Education Portal and online class where the kids can actually accelerate. So I could envision kids actually coming out with pretty good credit wise in the summer. If they do the summer reading program, and they take their three classes, and they do Education Portal, like they're like an entire credit, just an Education Portal in biology or civics, or whatever they need to take. So if they're on fire season, which we had kids at PL or up there with the fire, so we had kids out on, if I can fire them red, if you can imagine this early in the season, so they are not occasionally allowed credits, which they happen to have to graduate when they go out on fire, like you crack the hours. So, you know, we're not able to offer six periods of school, but we maximize as much as we can, so they still learn credit.
Okay, do you have a budget status overview? Started the month at nine hundred eighty thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars. We're only at one million seven thousand, forty-nine dollars. Obviously going to end in a good position, like I said last month. For the line, I'm always funding, maybe twenty percent of the year's revenue. So new business managers in place, he's been here two, three times already, going to be very pleased. I've heard many things already from my staff, and we're really happy to have him, so I'm sure he's going to have some new recommendations on moving money for capital projects. He seems very surprised at the amount of accounts we have. He's worked in a lot of bigger districts, and he said, "You guys have so many accounts, it's mind-boggling." Because not only do we have the regular accounts, but we have accounts like the grants that just approved, the computers. Because we're small, we give different little pockets. Now, a lot of them don't, you know, only maybe two thousand in this account, five thousand in this account, which is, you know, relatively speaking, we have many, many accounts. So wrapping, I say there are a lot of that, but budget's looking to come. Okay, you've almost all sped it all here. You can see the four hundred line up there on the graphic. And we have it right in there, about three seventy-five, three eighty, don't have any of the entire school year. Really haven't seen many fluctuations. Couple things, it's, at this point, we do not have a high school cross-country team for next year. Went through the usual functions, had to sign up, let's put in the bulletin, Christine read it, reads it daily. Please, 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 if you're interested, we had one student sign up. So at this point, it's very unlikely, I would say it's a no-go at this point, but I just want people to know that. Doesn't affect anything kind of monetarily, it's a sport that both genders participate in. When you lose a sport for one or the other, it typically creates a problem, but since this is a sport that applies to both, we're not going to get in any kind of trouble, but we really don't have the interest this year to feel. To all make this brief, if anybody wants a copy of this, this is a quick summary of what the facilities committee has been working on this year. Like I think Chairman Scott Loria, he's the one who keeps it going every month. We have several members, we're usually only able to get four or five at a time at any one time, a lot of folks are parents and are busy with their kids, got their activities, which is fine, it's good that they're involved. These are typical standing members, one of which is two of them that are here. So I'm just going to kind of briefly go through an overview of what's going on. The batting cage is being built right now at Alliance Park. It's mostly completed, the foundation that was used was the old tennis court, so the shell is up, the roof is on, trusses, everything set up. We're looking right now at possibilities for floor covering. The project is, at this point, minus the security law keypad, is solely funded by the boosters, or mid job, or cat room memorial fund. So at this point, the district has very little finances involved in the project. We replaced and upgraded the firearm system, that was done over Christmas break. These are things the board has already approved, it was kind of a summary of what we've been working on. If you remember a while back, the Ticklin Foundation granted us money for the new leaderboard, which is up and running, you probably had a chance to see that kind of two driving by. Lions Park, we're still working on trying to find a partner for Lions Park at this point. We've run into several dead ends. Lions Club used to take it over and totally maintain it. Lions Club doesn't exist anymore. We've gone as far as Ocean Park, looking for Lions Club, I've talked to Lions at Cat Lament. So we're just basically partnering with ourselves at this point, and other entities who use the park, there's the Little League Association. Edinson's active out there and keeping the grounds in good shape, mows the lawn, takes care of things, dumps the garbage, places toilet sinks. So he's keeping it in shape, but occasionally we have the kids out there helping. Mostly our expenditures have been manhowered. We ordered some dirt for the Little League end of the field, volunteers spread the dirt. So there are a lot of people lending helping hands, it's just a little disjointed because you never know who's out there on any given day, and just trying to wring it all in, because really, it's been the Lions Club that have handled it before. We're lucky we have a great community of people just trying to take care of it, but really, the district needs to step up and be more involved in that, so that's something that we're working on. One of our big challenges is the practice field over at the state, the football field. When the underground resource went in, that ground, you know, was dug up, that's a very deep system. And I don't know at what point, but at some point, well before my time, there was a bunch of filth put on there. So there were significant pieces and chunks of asphalt. You know clay itself, it can be hard, but you do know the difference, and so it's very hard. We put some soil type of sandy loam, I think you call it, on there, and it was only pretty good, the grass was growing, but if you remember, I believe it was February, we had that tornado morning, it rained about six inches and hailed a herd. Well, all that rain and hail created a bunch of rivulets in the field, and so it's really still not up to the smut as a practice field. Kids throw the javelins out there, and the ticks were getting broke off the javelins. So it's really not in shape to be practicing on, so we're working on that. Then we was met with a person out of Vancouver Battleground to kind of get some advice on it before we try to figure out what to do with it, because we don't want the kids practicing on the main field, and they can't always be on the softball and tearing that up, so we don't have a great solution for that yet, but we're working on it. But I don't know at what point the filth was put in there, but at some point, it was. Rob Schwartz and Bus Farm is going to hear on that, and glad to see that about to fruition tonight, so I won't go away with that one. We did have to replace our air conditioning unit in our communications room. There are three rooms off of the library that all have different sizes and varieties of equipment, probably eighty thousand dollars of equipment or more. So that was an emergency purchase we had to get moving on. That system costs no under nine thousand dollars. There's, it's got this, there's three different substations, I guess. So that was, you know, it was grossing up in the morning, I suppose. We kicked around a lot of other topics that really haven't necessarily come to fruition at this point, various summer work schedules, landscaping, we've had some dialogue about replacing the carpeting in the school. Discussion about signage at the park, the Lions Park, though should be completed this summer. You say something, Bob? Okay. All right. All right. We've never had air conditioning in the computer lab. That room is very hot in the summer and fall, so that's kind of another project we've been kicking around. Several thousand dollars of machines in there. It'd almost be better if we could move the room, but it's just hard to move that because the special wiring, the special, you guys probably know, the concrete. I mean, it's, it hits a hundred degrees in there, and that's way too hot for a bunch of computers. Been talking about additional space considerations, or covered type of play structure for PE, outdoor recess, talked about a drop-down curtain, gym divider, there's a closing column behind that. We started to talk about spending survey a couple times, but I want those to pick up. Discussion of fifty-seven building, and what are we going to do about the shop and location of them, moving money to the capital projects, so those have been ongoing discussions. A couple of things we've played with niceties is our softball field is a lot larger than the typical size of the softball field, there's no fence or line to designate a homerun, so pretty much impossible for girls to enter, hit a homerun, because the fence is like well beyond the typical homerun line. I already mentioned about the drop-down curtain in the gym. So I just do want to thank the facilities committee, it's not the most, you know, exciting topics that we kick around, although I would think so anyway. It's a necessary evil, and you have to have facilities. And we are going to be looking for a couple more members through the fall, so if anyone out there might be interested in that, that's your chance. But again, I do want to thank the committee, because we do need once a month. Thoughts going on?
We just thought it was.
Yeah. Yeah, we want to get homeruns. We did get a couple bits on it, and we were like, "What?" And so, you know, by the time people got back to us, the season was half over, and so it, so there's a fun result, but ongoing issues that we still would like to address at some point. Okay, Chairman.
Okay, board reports and future agenda items. Well, nothing left, so we're back. Where are your board reports and future agenda items from? Have you got anything?
I would just like to thank your, uh, for, um, I'm, uh, the, the, and, yeah, I'm telling it, uh, in the meeting, so I appreciate all of you guys, kind of, of your situation here.
Yeah, we appreciate you being able to pull this off, too.
Yes, thank you, Bob.
Yeah, it would have been, would have been difficult.
Would have been a no-go.
I do have. Yeah, right. I just, I have a question for Lisa, are you going to advertise to board members next week?
We, yes, it's, I'm pressing send as soon as, yep, there'll be something in each of the papers.
And so that will be.
Web page.
That will be, which, which numbers?
Five and two.
Five and two.
Units five and two are, is all newer districts, I guess, will be.
So we need people to volunteer to step up and do that.
In the same regard, I talked to the county to find out if there's anything, considerations that we should consider. And they said that July twentieth to July twenty-second, if we submit the resignations of the board members to the county, anybody who applies can get on the ballot, and I'm guessing from that that they fill out the term.
That's made, they're having a special final period for those positions on those gigs.
Right.
That's right. Yeah, what you said was right.
And in those specific districts?
Right.
That were.
Right. Those specific districts.
Right. So if somebody was interested and just came and didn't apply, then they would have to run an extra time and find a person.
Right. So on a period, anyone that's interested to file, that, that will be three days. I knew it was going to be three days, but I heard.
Are they going to advertise that special final period, is it a re-run advertising?
That's a good question. I can't stop now.
Maybe we can all advertise.
Yeah.
Definitely. Okay, any questions?
Just a reminder, Daddy would on Saturday, and we just want to start eight, but she's going to get back with me, and I have not heard from her. Maybe I'll just.
If it comes out, that's a.
Saturday, it's actually a weekday, Saturday. I'll check back in, because she hasn't got one.
Anything else? Are you going to give any more to do here?
Well, I didn't want to say one thing. I'm sorry. We have some cake back there for Marilyn, because it's her last official board meeting, and I'm sure she's saddened by.
Y'all are favorites for my favorite part of my job.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
So now I'm going to have to sign in here.
Guys, you might just stick around, we have a lot of cake back there, fancy looking cookies, so.
Yeah, we'll save you, it's fun.
Thank you.
I'll be still. I'm ready.
Um, I'm a good friend to my mom today, and, um, this is something I just, um, possibly I'm getting, um, but I really, truly appreciate everything that she's ever done, and her two members here, because they've all, I guess, um, whatever she's done for the kids that run the district, um, I just can't, I just can't thank her enough.
Okay, thanks, Mom.
Thank you, Bob.
I move the board to adjourn meeting. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's adjourned?
Dee. Oh, I can't say her name, I think I already did.
Dee Dee.
Dee Dee. She's got to check out the balls.